First, 2017, 6:30 PM. We're here for our regulars business meeting of the Laramie City Council. First item on our agenda is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please rise and join me?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Here.
Hanson?
Yes.
Henry?
Here.
McKinney absent. Polikas?
Here.
Shumway?
Here.
Schuster?
Here.
Pierce?
Here.
Somerville?
Here.
That's eight present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, we have two proclamations tonight. The first one is for Distinguished Young Women of Wyoming Week. Whereas, Distinguished Young Women of Wyoming is a part of a national scholarship program that provides a transformative experience by promoting and rewarding scholarship, leadership, and talent in young women. And whereas, the program will select its next representative from a group of accomplished young women at its statewide program in Laramie on August 5th. And whereas, young women are encouraged to be healthy, studious, involved, ambitious, and responsible through the Be Your Best Self program. And whereas, Distinguished Young Women is celebrating 60 years of providing college scholarships and life skills to high school senior girls. And whereas, scholarships are awarded at the state level, 4,800 last year. And millions in college-granted scholarships are available, 1.1 billion nationally. And whereas, more information can be found at www.distinguishedwy.org. Now therefore, be it resolved that August 1st through the 7th, 2017, is hereby designated as Distinguished Young Women of Wyoming Week in the city of Laramie, Wyoming. And I believe we have two representatives, Caroline Ballard and Mary Alice Galino. You guys would come forward.
Three.
Three.
Three. I apologize, I only had two on my list. You guys are welcome to tell us a little bit more about the program or about the week.
Great, yeah. So, our week officially, well, I guess it officially begins tonight, but we have 10 high school senior girls coming to Laramie tomorrow. They're going to be participating in this scholarship program. We, I'm not sure on the exact up-to-date total, but over $5,000 in scholarships available.
Six thousand.
Six thousand, over $6,000 in scholarships available to our girls in the categories of fitness, self-expression, which is like public speaking, interview talent, and academics as well. Our program is Saturday at 6:30 PM. It's going to be at the Griffin Theater here at the Laramie Plains Civic Center. And we have a great week planned for them. They're going to be doing lots of things around Laramie, exploring our downtown, exploring the university campus as a way to sort of show them our community and encourage them to maybe consider UW and coming here after they're done with high school. So, yeah, they're just going to be involved and around, and it's a great program. I think all three of us have done it ourselves and are just looking to give back to the next generation. So, yeah, we encourage everyone here, if you'd like to attend our program on Saturday night, we're going to be awarding those scholarships, and it'll be really enjoyable. Mary Alice, is there anything else you want to add?
Yes. Since we are, our motto for Distinguished Young Women is the fact that we do a transformative and life-altering experience for the young women. And if you've ever written, obviously you guys have written statement, mission statements, and sometimes they get kind of, okay, we've written them, check bar, put them in the garbage. But, we really do live up to that. And so what we are doing with these young women is that we are doing a women's forum with them and exposing them to the successful women that are in our community. We are having various other events with them. We only have them from tomorrow night through Saturday. Some states do have them for a whole week, and so they really get to do a lot with them. But what we are doing is they will be presenting, you know, a Be Your Best Self program for youth that are ages eight through, I think about eight through 11. They will be exposed to leaders of the community. They are certainly all coming in with excellent, excellent grades. Most of them are four point, all of them are 4.0 or very close to them. Some of excellent academics, and they're just wonderful, wonderful young women. I really encourage you and all of you back here to please come and join us in cheering on and supporting these young women. And if you see them walking around town in teal t-shirts that say Distinguished Young Women, very sparkly, Wyoming, that's us.
And thank you for the opportunity to be recognized.
Well, thank you. I think personally, programs like this are really very, very, very important to cultivate good leadership and keep them involved. Hopefully some of them will be up here, maybe, in a few years, so really appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Of course.
Do you want a photo op?
Photo op.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, our next proclamation is Professional Engineers Day. Whereas, licensed professional engineers are dedicated to applying scientific knowledge, mathematics, and ingenuity to develop solutions for technical, societal, and commercial problems while holding paramount the public health, safety, and welfare. And whereas, the Wyoming Licensed Professional Engineers in Laramie have made significant contributions on a local and national scale. And whereas, Wyoming was the first state to enact laws regarding the licensure of professional engineers in 1907. And whereas, Laramie's economy will continue to benefit in part because its licensed professional engineers are instrumental to our state. And whereas, the work of licensed professional engineers in Laramie in cooperation with other professional, technical, and skilled workers maintains and improves the quality of life we have come to expect. And whereas, August 2nd, 2017, has been declared Professional Engineers Day by the Wyoming Society of Professional Engineers in conjunction with the National Society of Professional Engineers, an organization founded in 1934 that represents the interests of more than 31,000 licensed professional engineers and those on the path to licensure, who show the highest level of dedication to the profession in all 50 states and U.S. territories. Now therefore, I, Andy Somerville, Mayor of the city of Laramie, by the authority vested in me, hereby proclaim August 2nd, 2017, as Professional Engineers Day in the city of Laramie, and call upon all citizens to join me in the special observance. So, we have a couple of representatives here. We have Joe Lord, and of course, our very own William Winkler and Eric Milliken. If you guys would like to come forward.
(Inaudible)
Mayor Somerville, members of council, thank you so much for signing onto this proclamation. I think it's a, I think it's a very relevant proclamation, especially for the city of Laramie. We have so many great local civil engineering firms here that have started here and that have spread all over the country. And of course, our wonderful University of Wyoming Department, which has only expanded and now even has a, has a traffic simulator, which is something that was there. But, yeah, thank you so much for this. And if there are any other engineers in the audience, I invite them to stand up right now.
Please. Thank you. Well, thank you guys very much for everything that you do for the city of Laramie and for the community in general. We are much better off and appreciative of all your efforts and your dedication to your profession. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Mayor, I think it should be noted that Joe Lord just recently retired. I had the pleasure of working with Joe as a county commissioner many, many years and a lot of projects through the county, and I just wanted to show my appreciation for all of your efforts, and happy retirement.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you all very much. We appreciate it. All right. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. City Clerk, can you read the notice, please?
Notice is hereby given that city council will hold the following public meeting and public hearing at 6:30 PM on August 1, 2017, in the city council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Stake public comments on the following, TA-17-04 submitted by city of Laramie to create a new section within Laramie municipal code that establishes regulations for mobile vending operations within the city of Laramie. All applications, plans, specifications relative to these matters are available for review at the city of Laramie Planning Office at 405 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming.
Thank you. So, we'll open this public hearing to any comments from the public, to anybody that wishes to provide public comment. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Next item on our agenda is disclosures by city council members. Do we have any disclosures this evening? Okay. Seeing none, turn it over to the Vice Mayor for changes in the agenda.
Yeah. So, I move that the following changes to the agenda be approved. We have one change. It's on the consent agenda. It's item 8O. And the time for our meeting on August 7th has moved from 6 o'clock to 6:30.
Second.
Second by Counselor Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
Okay. I move that the agenda be set as changed.
Second by Counselor Henry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
Okay. I move that the consent agenda be approved and that specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Move the second, second by Counselor Hanson. City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McKinney absent. Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number 10. Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. The title of it is "Award of a Bid for an 8-Million-Gallon Reservoir Roof Repair Project." I move to approve an award of a bid for the 8-Million-Gallon Reservoir Roof Repair Project to thermal advantage of Jelm, Wyoming, in the amount of $284,820, along with the contingency of $28,482, for a total amount not to exceed $313,302. Authorize the necessary budget revision and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second. Second by the Vice Mayor.
City staff, Mr. Van Zee. The floor is yours.
Our mayor, council members, this kind of come up as an emergency. This roof is the corrugated roof that covers the 8-Million-Gallon tank up at, basically where Worcester and Grand are, where our major pump station is at. This roof was put on approximately, and we've not been able to find a given date, but approximately 1965. It's been there for almost approximately 50 years. The reason I know that date, one of our former employees used to swim in it till they covered it, and he, that's why I know about what the date was, because he told him he thought it was '64 or '65. Just, just for some historical information, okay?
Nobody swims in it anymore.
No.
That's why we covered it.
What we've been doing, this, this roof is 286 feet by 286 feet. It has heavy corrugated steel, it's got fasteners, it's ridged and balled. It's got seams where the pieces have come together. And we've done temporary repairs on it over the years to maintain the integrity. It's gotten to the point where the, between the caulking and the fasteners, the caulking has deteriorated to the point we can't keep up with it anymore, and the fasteners all need tightened. And they are centered about two inches across that entire roof. I mean, there's thousands of them. So, when this occurred, we noticed it, the May snow. We've always gone up after a snow because the snow seems to melt on top of the roof. And the roof is sloped, but when you have a snowpack on top, it has a tendency to hold the water, and we noticed a fairly significant amount of water dripping into the tank. At that point, we increased the background or residual chlorine to the tank from half a million to one part per million. We started sampling on a daily basis, and at this point, we found no reason to take the tank out of service. It's a, it's a fairly low risk. The Southeast District Engineer for the Department of Environmental Quality was out and looked at the tank. He saw it as a repair. He does not believe it needs to be engineered. At that point, we went, staff and myself started looking at possible solutions to cover the tank, to seal it up, and we talked to three different contractors and about four different manufacturers, and this was the product that, one was the most, the least expensive, and the one that has the best life. It also, one of the, the contractor that we worked with on this has used it many times. In fact, when this broke loose, he was in Oklahoma covering a tank. Life on it, in his opinion, is 20, 25 years. It has a natural, excuse me, a natural deterioration rate of a half a mil per year. If you notice, it's a 50 to 60 mil covering. So, from a natural deterioration, it shouldn't be an issue. And when we started looking at it, this was the best solution for the short term. It's not as much of an issue in the summertime, because even if it rains, it typically runs off. There's nothing to hold the water in place, so we don't see it as much, but when you have snowpack on it, that's when we notice it the most.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. First question, it's a fairly shallow rake on this, on this roof, if I remember right. And what they're proposing is, you talked about problems in the winter. I was thinking of the summer problems, that it gets terribly hot if that's some kind of whatever they're putting on top, plastic cover or something like that. Would that be very susceptible to heat, that it would break down or something like that?
Our, well, Counselor Hanson, no, that was one of the reasons we selected the product. Oklahoma gets a lot hotter than we do, and then he was using the same product there. One of the other advantages to this is that this product compared to any of the others is that it can rain on it two minutes after it's applied. Most, most covers require two hours. Well, this time of year, two hours, it's clear sky, and, and an hour later, it's raining. So, that was one of the other advantages we saw to it. But, from a heat standpoint, it will flex with the roof.
Your Honor, one more question. You said it should last about 20 years or something like that. I read in the last paragraph, they give us only a two-year and then an additional three-year extended warranty. Is that customary for, because I just had a roof installed, I thought they gave me longer than that. I can't remember.
It depends whether it's a commercial-type roof. Your residential roofs are a little different. They're different material. My roof, I think, has a 13-year warranty on it. On this one, we looked at a product that claimed a 20-year warranty. However, after, after doing some digging on it, they've never, every time there was a warranty issue, it was an application problem. So, there was never, there really wasn't a warranty. The material would last 20 years, but if there was a problem, it was never the material's problem. So...
So, that's customary.
That's customary. Even our major rehabilitation projects have a two-year warranty on them. Anything after that, that's, that's a standard warranty in the industry.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other questions for city staff? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Are there any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, back to council. Any discussion or comments from council on this item? Okay. City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinney absent. Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto item number 11. Counselor Henry.
Yes. I move to approve original ordinance number 1972, as partially recommended by the Planning Commission on first reading, with staff-provided minor amendments, as shown in Attachment 3, and with original and recommended Attachment 2, in accordance with findings of fact and conclusions of law, noting a public hearing was held August 1st, 2017.
Second. Second by the Vice Mayor. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So, we do have a, I'd like to say, a short PowerPoint for you. It's not so short, so we'll try to go through it, but this should help clarify any misconceptions or confusions that there might be. Counselor Henry, I do believe you've probably seen this before at Planning Commission, so it might be a little bit of a review for you, but we will go ahead. So, just as this process started of why we're looking at regulating mobile vending, honestly, your first council goal for 2017 brought it up. And on a, you know, different note, safety for citizens, protecting the city, protecting the vendors as well from any potential issues that might come up with this, eliminating just potential conflict with code and actually establishing rules for this type of business venture, and really just ensuring that those new rules are compatible with the rest of the things that we're doing here in town. So, as you probably saw within the proposed text amendment, it is a little bit, there's a lot of moving parts. It's a little hairy. So, who is actually impacted by this are some of the food trucks we see in town, food trailers, mobile merchandise trucks potentially. However, we do have some things in place for different types of pseudo-mobile businesses, like these temporary roadside stands. These are not included in this text amendment. Lemonade stands, coffee shacks that are again non-mobile, prepackaged food vendors, so think the Ice Cream Man, the Schwanz truck that goes around and does deliveries, those types of things. Mobile service providers, so there's the paper shredding operations, Tough Guys Lawn Care, those other lawn care services, that type of thing. And then just in general, caterers who are just bringing services to a different location. So, when we initially began this, as all most planning projects do, we look to see what other communities in the area are doing to try to get a foot up, to see, figure out if somebody's had, you know, a lot of success doing one thing, then maybe we could copy it in some capacity. So, we look to see what other communities in the front range are doing. Fort Collins has licensing requirements in a process. Businesses are required to license specific vehicles, and only those are being used. There are separate agreements to vend in parks or recreation areas. They're required to have liability insurance with the city as an additional insured and certificate holder, as well as just general sales tax collection. As far as locations and times that are regulated, only allowed in non-neighborhood districts, on lots or on streets where they can parallel park, so not impeding the traffic flow in any way. If they're on private property, a site plan diagram is required. No vending within 200 feet of any schools. Restriction on number of days per week and hours per day that they can stay at a same location, just ensuring that these actually are mobile businesses, and they're not permitted downtown whatsoever. As far as safety concerns that they had, vehicles need to be attended, they need to be maintained to be in safe condition, and they do have a limit on the maximum size of propane tanks that are allowed. And just being responsible for litter, suitable containers nearby for customers, again, to handle any potential litter that is caused. And then they go through health inspections and general enforcement. Cheyenne has a very different process. They aren't given a license. You need to apply and get approval before every time that they would go about vending, and that would get routed to all of these different city departments that you can see on there that need to get approval prior to them doing any sort of vending. So, typically, we were told it takes five-ish days was what we were told. That may be true, that may be not. And if they were vending in the right-of-way, it would require the actual rental of a space, and that's based upon size, and they're required to pay the city a rental fee for parking in the right-of-way. Boulder has much stricter regulations, and you see them regulating a lot more different facets of these operations. But generally, health inspections, tax licenses, insurance being required, auto, general liability, and property insurance, again, naming the city as an additional insured certificate holder. And then any drivers of said vehicles need to have their driver's licenses on file. They're limited to two 100-pound propane tanks. Hood inspection, which is generally covered in most fire inspections. And then safety measures, fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, and staff safety training for everybody that's going to be a part of it. Again, stricter location regulations are allowed in commercial districts on private property, but only allowed within city right-of-way in industrial zone districts, 150 feet minimum from any residential zone districts or any existing restaurant. Maximum number of hours per day at the same location, again, just ensuring that they're mobile. No structures, canopy tables, or chairs. Needs to be attended at all times. Trash recycling and compost containers, again, taking care of any rubbish that might occur. And then no liquid being discharged from the vehicle. So, as we looked at all of this information, we, quite a few things stuck out. Major points that we wanted to hit were just a general permitting and fee structure. How do we want to organize this? Does it want to be, you know, more like Cheyenne where we just take it on a case-to-case basis, or do we want to go on the long-term and do a yearly permit? Do we want to allow vending in the right-of-way? Yes, no, sometimes? What are the allowable zoning districts that we want to look at? What type of insurance do we want to require? Again, and that falls back on whether or not we want to have vending in the right-of-way, because if there is, then they're on city property, and there needs to be more insurance. Proximity to schools and restaurants? Where are these going to be stored when they're not in use? How do we handle special events and things that happen pretty frequently here in Laramie? Vending in and around parks, safety inspections, and just the general sales tax collection. So, the draft code that you have in front of you, a quick summary, how it's organized is the new terms that we're putting a definition on, because they're referred to many a time, and we want to make sure everyone knows what we're talking about. We propose an annual license structure, insurance requirements, the propane safety, zoning districts that are allowed, the storage of vehicles, and then, as of course, exceptions to all of these rules. So, new terms, which I'll real quickly cover the fact that the amount of attachments that you have. If you look at your cover letter, you'll, I see that we did do a little bit of changing around, and there's a brief summary of the changes that we made between your Attachment 3 and your Attachment 1. Basically, originally, there was a food truck term that was defined. We had only referred to it in the definitions, so we got rid of it. Organizational changes, reorganizing the storage requirements into a single subheading. We were told that it was a little bit confusing, so that helped. And then just general rewording throughout for clarity. So, just a, if you had any concerns about what the difference was between the very similar documents that you received. So, new terms, mobile, meaning, you know, able to move, basically. The neighborhood mobile food vendor, this is one of those exempt type businesses that I showed, the Schwanz, the Ice Cream Man type businesses, where it's a vehicle vending only ready-to-eat or packaged food, no cooking on the vehicle whatsoever, which is why they're given a little bit different requirements. And then the general term of just a mobile vending unit, which is any portion of the with, of the operation that's associated with the service or operation occurs, and it doesn't include generators and machinery used to provide power. So, we're talking if someone has a fleet of food trucks or t-shirt trucks or whatever have you, anything that's really associated with the activity or the service that the business is providing. which is why they're given a little bit different requirements. And then the general term of just a mobile vending unit, which is any portion of the operation that's associated with the service or operation occurs, and it doesn't include generators and machinery used to provide power. So we're talking if someone has a fleet of food trucks, or T-shirt trucks, or whatever have you, anything that's really associated with the activity or the service that the business is providing. So, as I said, a yearly license process is what we're proposing through the city manager's office from January through December. It would allow the operator to vend within the parameters of the code that are established, and if there are serious violations upon the agreed-upon parameters, then the license could be suspended and/or revoked. I mean, there's a process for both of those. We don't really anticipate that happening, especially with the vendors that we currently have in town, but it is always nice to have in place. So, general, the requirements, yearly inspections by the fire department on vehicles, just ensuring that they're safe. And all applicable licenses and approvals are required for the desired services. So this is a real general way of saying, if someone is serving food, they need to have a commercial kitchen. They need to have a high health license. They need to be approved to create and serve food. If someone is vending T-shirts, or plants, or whatever, then clearly there's going to be less licenses that they're going to need, but any applicable license that a business would be required to have would still be required to have it, even if they're vending mobile. One person onsite at all times while in operation to move the vehicle. Really, if there's a fire or there's an issue, we want to make sure that there's not an abandoned truck somewhere. ADA accessibility to vehicles, just ensuring that someone doesn't park 40 feet back on a dirt gravel lot and is inaccessible for those that need them to be closer. No smoking within the vending unit, and no flashing or strobe lights, just being distracting. Location requirements, no vending within the city right-of-way, as it's proposed. Minimum of 15-foot separation from fire hydrants and 10 feet from all structures. This was given to us by the fire marshal, just ensuring that they can get trucks and ladders wherever they may need to be. Only allowable within non-residential zoning districts, keeping out of fire lanes, accessible routes, setbacks, clear vision triangles, again, just making sure everyone's still staying safe with them being there, and not allowed within 200 feet of any school, K through 12. This was at the request of the Albany County School District. So, vending in the right-of-way. As it is proposed, the ordinance prohibits any vending in the right-of-way, so that is no vending in the street whatsoever. There is exceptions to this. If you're vending to a park, and you get Parks and Rec approval as laid out within the code, then you can vend in the right-of-way as your permission is given. And then during an approved special event, those will have roads closed, so we're talking, you know, Jubilee Days or the farmer's market, when roads are closed, you know, there's not really an issue. Again, this is as it's proposed. If you decide that you would like to allow vending in the right-of-way, allow vending in the right-of-way at an additional fee, that's something that we can explore at your request. So, that's why we go for three readings. But, so what would these regulations look like? Again, as it stands, no vending within the right-of-way in any capacity, excluding the exceptions. So this would be like parking in the street, vending onto the sidewalk, as the sidewalks and the parkways are all part of city right-of-way as well. So if you look on the left, allowed, you can see those food trucks are vending in parking lots, whereas the ones on the right are parked on the street, vending onto the sidewalk, which is prohibited as the code is proposed. So, if you were to choose to have us rewrite the code and allow vending in right-of-way, additional regulations will likely be included. You can see most likely zoning regulations, where do we want them vending in the right-of-way, where we would not want them vending in the right-of-way. Operational hours, is it appropriate to be vending at 2:30 in the morning on city property, is it not? And how long vendors can stay in one location, again, just ensuring that they're mobile. So some cities require, like Cheyenne, to pay for the space depending on the physical size of the equipment, so that's another thing that we could explore. So like I said, it could be done, but we're going to need some time to make quite a few amendments and changes, so. Operational hours proposed, 6:00 AM to 3:00 AM. If they're within 150 feet of a residential zoning district, change to 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM to just not be disruptive. There are a lot of loud generators and disturbances that could be caused, and we're trying to avoid that type of thing. Safety requirements, propane tanks need to be proper and up to date. This happens when they're refilled, so that shouldn't be much of an issue. They need to be properly secured and inspected by the fire department. We want, don't want them tossing off and lighting on fire and things like that. General liability insurance and products liability insurance at $1 million. This is pretty typical of everybody that we've explored. Again, if things were to change to be within the right-of-way, we would likely add the city on as an additional insured and certificate holder. Again, that's pretty standard that we've seen throughout the area, just ensuring that the city is safe from any incidents because it's on their property. No items associated with the operations impeding right-of-way, including sidewalks. We just don't want, again, to cause a disturbance. And the propane assembly needs to meet YDOT standards, which there are professionals that build, you know, these types of trucks and vehicles, so that's pretty much done as soon as it's created. Vending to parks, Parks and Rec can grant approval to vendors to vend goods to parks. Approval will be given to days and dates and times. If there's something happening, sporting events, that type of things, we just don't want to interfere with any events that Parks and Rec is doing, where they are providing catering or whatever have you. This is pretty typical of what we're seeing right now. Another attachment, I believe it's Attachment 2, is Chapter 5.76, which comes out of the vending into parks section of code. So there is a slight change to this. Currently, the current F, which you can see the slash-through on, is what is happening right now. Basically, Parks and Rec are giving approval for a season. It would remove this and allow us to monitor it through the new portion of code, this 5.82, as opposed to being in two places. So that's the purpose of that. Storage, one mobile vending unit allowed to be stored in the street outside property owned and occupied by the owner of the unit. This is straight from the RV and camper ordinance that was approved not too long ago. Just one is allowed on the street, similar to everything else. Any additional equipment cannot be stored within the right-of-way. It needs to be on private property. Everything should be legally parked. And this last point, units cannot be stored overnight at a vending location for more than three consecutive days. This was our attempt at a compromise to ensure that mobile vendors are actually being mobile and not just setting up shop somewhere. There is a process that if someone wanted to establish at a location, they would need to go through the site plan process and be approved that way. So this just ensures that at least twice a week, mobile vendors are actually moving and being mobile. As with everything, there are a couple of exceptions. So these may be waived for a special event permit, including that prohibition within right-of-way. Basically, if a special event permit is happening, we'll have all the information of exactly what's going to be going on throughout that special event, so we can handle different types of things and let certain things be waived. If a vendor is under private contract and not serving the public, they can operate in these residential zoning districts that we're talking about. Graduation parties, birthday parties, those types of things. If someone wants to come onto someone's driveway or park in front of somebody's house and serve specifically in a catering-type capacity, then they're able to do so as long as they're not serving the general public, so we don't have a bunch of people, you know, driving over to Tony's tacos and, you know, picking up stuff at somebody's house, so. And again, allowing to operate in the right-of-way in association with that Parks and Rec approval. So, these are just the general next steps that have clearly changed quite a few times. But, so this was the information that was given at all of our meetings thus far, so just keeping tabs on everything. So, that was a quick attempt at a run-through for all the nuances of this text amendment, so I'd be happy to answer any questions. We do have one of our mobile vendors here in town. I'm sure he'd be happy to make any comments, ask or answer any questions as well.
Questions for Mr. Conner. Counselor Schuster?
It's a little confusing when I was reading this, so I'm just going to ask you and get the straight statement. So right now, if a person's on private property in a large lot, he's okay to stay there a month, if he wants to, as long as the property owner's okay with that?
No, that's included in that, three days.
He can only be there three days?
In theory, they could arrive at 8:00 AM, stay till 2:00 AM or 3:00 AM, and then take their business home and then return to the same location the next day. That would be allowed because they're not staying overnight at the vending location. However, as it stands, regardless of what type of property they're on, three days overnight at the same location.
So we're going to regulate what they can do on somebody else's property?
If they want to stay on someone's property, there are avenues to go and do that. However, the point of the mobile vending is to stay mobile, and we're just ensuring that.
Okay, and then like you said, if somebody has a graduation or someone comes in and requests to close the street for a block party, then they could be there at that location?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Several questions. Are not in the city all fire hydrants on public property?
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
Because you said they cannot park on public property, why then make that special statement about so-so far away from the fire hydrants? Because if we kept the statement not on public property, that's included already. So I was kind of confused about that. I was wondering about the summer ice cream truck that comes through with the little bell, ding 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 ding, and goes down every street. Where does that fall in this mobile vending regulation? Is it now illegal, or, because it's really mobile, you know? They just stop, sell the kid an ice cream, and move on. Is that permissible?
Mayor and Counsel Hanson, that is within our definition B of a neighborhood mobile food vendor, and that falls within that, the prepackaged individual servings that, with no cooking on the vehicle, that falls within that realm.
Okay.
And those are part of the exceptions. At the very end, you'll see that they are allowed to be within residential districts and within the right-of-way.
Okay. Other one, you know, what I've seen in other places where somebody with a mobile vending comes in, let's say they are, we were to allow public property or be on public property, where they set up one or two or three tables in front of it for people to sit down and have their hot dog or something like that. That would not be permissible here, would it?
Mayor and Counselor Hanson, that's correct. It would not be permissible unless it's attached to the vehicle. That's a succinct way to say that, yeah.
I'd like to see something like that, because, you know, I think if you buy a hot dog from the stand and you're with your kids, you probably want to sit down or something like that. So, that would be something that, you know, would be to my liking. Otherwise, it's sort of just a standing place, and that's kind of, you know, inhospitable in some ways, you know? One last question. There is a section of prohibited acts. I guess it's Section 5.76.040. And there's a statement in there E. It says, "No motorized vehicles, trailers, or mobile vending apparatus other than handheld displays and push carts are permitted. No merchandise displays, containers, supplies, or other items related to the vendor shall be placed in the park or any right-of-way, et cetera." I have the feeling your statement about no motorized vehicles, trailers, and so on refers to you can't set it up in the park. But the way it's written, it seems like everywhere. I think what, to clarify this, to move the section of in a park or any right-of-way except on, in a handheld, no, wait a minute. Except, do you mean this to apply only to the park? I was unclear, because otherwise, your pictures of the motorized vehicles are not permissible. I didn't understand that.
Mayor and Counselor Hanson, this 5.76 comes specifically out of the Parks and Rec chapter about vending within parks. Now that you mention it, there is some confusion that we could clarify with that. I will need to work with the Parks and Rec Director prior to an additional reading to clarify some of the language to ensure that there is no concerns about that.
Freedom has a birthday. There were lots of motorized vehicles in Washington Park, as a matter of fact, trailers and...
Well, Freedom Has a Birthday is also a special event, so it's handled within those special event permits. So all of that is taken care of, but in this specific instance, there is some confusion between E about, we'll need to specify specifically that it's within parks and eliminate any of the right-of-way confusion. It's minor changes, but yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Counselor Polikas?
I'm interested in the historical background to this. This is a significant ordinance, and I'm wondering, has there been complaints by citizens? Have there been numerous complaints? What direction are those complaints? Why are we doing this, other than the fact that other communities have chosen to do it?
Mayor and Counselor Polikas, it initially started with the fact that it is a council goal about handling something about vendors within the right-of-way. Upon further investigation, we realized that there were no rules whatsoever for vendors within the right-of-way, with the exception of vending into parks. As things were occurring, I am aware that PD received parking complaints. But that's the extent of my knowledge really on that. However, with it being the top priority or council goal, that was really what kickstarted this whole concept, and if you're going to do it, you might as well do it right in full, which is why there is the intensive code before you.
Have we had, I think you kind of said it, we haven't had a lot of complaints from people as far as, far as these vendors parking on the right-of-way versus not parking on right-of-ways, parking in neighborhoods, so forth and so on?
Only, to my knowledge, parking and where they're stored.
Okay.
No complaints were received on the planning end. I believe any that happened went to the police department about illegal parking.
When you say where they're stored, I assume that means that where they're stored at the owner's home, and maybe neighbors objecting to that? Is that what you're directing that?
That is my interpretation, yes.
Okay. One other question, and it's a little bit different. The, some of the restaurants and coffee shops downtown have chairs and tables out on the sidewalk, which is a right-of-way. Are they allowed to do that, and do they pay a fee for that at all to the city or take a permit out or anything like that?
Mayor and Counselor Polikas, yes, there is a, through the engineering division, there's what's called a right-of-way obstruction permit. Those can be both temporary and permanent. I know some of them downtown have done the permanent ones. I know some downtown are illegal and should have enforcement actions and gotten rid of, because they don't have those right-of-way obstruction permits, but there is a process for it, yes.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious about the discussion a little bit earlier about the mobile vending trucks being prohibited within 200 feet of a K through 12 school. And that was per the Albany County School District, is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you expound on that a little bit more, the reasoning behind it?
Mayor and Counselor Gabriel, it was something that we saw pretty prevalent within other communities, so we reached out to the Albany County School District, and they said, yes, they would like that in place. However, we did leave that open to exception as well with the private contract. So if there were events going on at the school or different meets or games or whatever have you, that if the school district chose one of our mobile vendors to vend for that event, then they could be under private contract and therefore be there. It seems that most communities just didn't want any potential issues with children going out, you know, towards the street and whatnot, any potential issues caused by that.
And so like during a football game at the high school, they would be prohibited unless they had permission from the school district?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Other question?
Other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Do you have another question?
I took too long.
Get out of here fast enough.
I do, I do have one more question. It's a short question, actually. As far as people, have you received any, any comments from, from local restaurants in town and so forth as to, as to their perception of mobile vendings? Whether it's compatible with them, whether it's unfair to them because they, so forth and so on? Is, is there any, is there any friction, if you will?
Mayor and Counselor Polikas, we've given them ample opportunity to provide comment. We haven't received any word from any business owners. And from what we were informed with, we've had two meetings with the mobile vendors within town. It's our opinion, because they told us, that there's a very good working relationship between the two. And I've been told nothing to dispute that, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So let's open this up to the public. I believe one of our mobile vendors is here. So if you can introduce yourself for the record.
I will.
And then there's a sheet behind the city clerk on the second table. You can sign when you leave.
Sorry.
You're good. You're good.
I'm nervous. Not really nervous.
And, and just to make it more complicated, the podium goes up and down.
That's all right. You're good. My name's Trent Whitzel. I own Double Dubs and am the kind of president of the Food Truck Alliance here in town. There's, this is a very touchy subject for me because this is what I do professionally for my family and everything. With the PD, the parking in the PD, I had one disgruntled individual that attacked me numerous times. We have stalking and restraining and harassment orders against this individual with the PD. I think I had the cops calling me 47 times. Sorry again if this takes over five minutes. So that one individual is kind of being taken care of at this time. With the schools and the rider, or 200 feet with the school, that's, it's a hard one, too. I've done special permits with the school district, and we get permission through Ed Getz at the school district to park there. I don't think it should be written in the codes because then we're just gonna be dealing with the same type of individual, you know, that I've been dealing with. Because if he sees that we're parked within 200 feet of a school, then he's just gonna bring it to attention, and we're gonna have to deal with the PD and everything else, you know? Even when I go to the school and provide my services, you know, it, it becomes a problem there anyway. So if he knows that I can't park to, within 200 feet, he doesn't know that we get a permit or a permission through the school district. So if that one's taken out, that would be awesome. Parking in the right-of-way, so that's, that's kind of a touchy one for me, too. Parking downtown and serving, you know, in front of a barber shop and stuff, I don't think that should be allowed. Parking in parks, I think it should be allowed. It's the safest kind of place that we could go. There's no parked cars, there's no parking lot. People can come up freely, come up and, you know, order whatever they want to order and then go sit in the park. It's kind of the safest place for them. Let's see. Trying to, I took notes as we were going, so. The three-day rule, I have people come talk to me. They want me to promote their business for weeks at a time. You know, right now, I'm at Laramie Fitness, and I'm promoting what Laramie Fitness is doing. He's a local business owner, too, so I'm providing services through him, through my Facebook, that, you know, I'm gonna be there for weeks at a time. Come get, come get food, my services, and then a special discount through, you know, Laramie Fitness or any other place that I'm at. This was not, we tried to negotiate the three days. They were very, very firm with it, with the three-day rule. So that was, it wasn't negotiated between us and the planning office. The annual permit, I think it's $120. I think Cheyenne or Fort Collins is $25. You know, so the, the permit for us is a little bit high because I'm paying through the Agriculture Department all the other special permits that I do during the year. I believe there should be a permit there just because we don't want any Joe Schmo coming off the street and just vending, you know? Let's see. Yeah? I think I can hit everything. Any questions that you guys have for a business owner doing this mobile vending?
Does anybody have any questions?
Mayor?
Yeah, please. Counselor Gabriel?
I was just curious, Trent, how many people or how many vending operations are you aware of in Laramie?
I'm aware of like, there's probably close to a dozen, to be honest with you. You know, there's a couple of coffee shops, a couple other food trailers. Yeah, so there's probably about close to a little under a dozen in town.
And what have you heard considering this proposed...
A lot of them really wanted to fight to try to just get everything kicked out. But they're not here, you know? So, so I don't, I don't, I don't know their whole, like, goal. I know a couple of them, they're college students. So I don't think they're, this is home base for them, you know? And then some of the other ones, I heard rumors of them moving and stuff. So it's kind of personal for me that everything works out and everything, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor?
So, and maybe this is not a question for you, but for, for our city staff. How many spots are there actually downtown? That would, I mean, we've got the railroad park.
Yeah, the railroad park, and then that park on First Street, right next to Coal Creek Tap.
Right, so there's one spot near Coal Creek, across from Lovejoy's. And then there are how many spots at the railroad park? Do we know?
Mayor, I don't, or excuse me, Mayor, Counselor? Please, I don't know for sure. I would guess and invite Todd or anyone to correct me that the right-of-way adjacent to the depot, I bet there's four, five, six, maybe seven at most.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Any other public comment? Okay, so go back to council for discussion, comments. Remember, this is first reading. We'll have two more to go. Oh, please, sure.
We don't, I own a double-decker bus and do about 28 seats upstairs in my business and everything. So there's not really, there's nothing falling in this line for what, where that should be and everything, so. Huh? What? Yeah, I'm not vending out of that, so it's just, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
Nope, that's okay. All right, where were... Counselor Henry?
So I want to address the, the three-day thing, too, because I know what we're, what we're trying to do is make sure that it really is a mobile operation. But, you know, as, as he pointed out, some places want to, they want someone parked there for longer than three days. They want them there for a month or a few weeks or... So I wonder if there's any way we could address that? We could say, you know, we could come up with some exception that the owner, that the, that if you're parked on private property, if that person requests it or something like that. That's just what I'm thinking. And, and I think it's, I think it's fair. Because I see, you know, I mean, I'm chasing, that, chasing these places all over. You know, you see it one day, and then you go back there a couple of days later, and it's not there, and then I don't know where to find it. And you guys really have good stuff. And so does that fish one, too. So I think that we should come up with some wording that can make an exception to the three days.
On private property?
On private property.
Counselor Hanson?
To that particular point, thank you, Your Honor. There is a coffee shop, a small mobile coffee shop on East Grant. Very nice. It's on a private property. It's been there for quite some time. People drive up and get their coffee and drive off. Is that a mobile operation or is that a stationary operation? I'm clear on that, how you would define this.
Please.
Mayor and Council, just to clarify a few of the things that have come up. There's nothing in the code that says that vendors cannot go back to a certain location day after day. Simply storage overnight, just to clarify that. So if a business wanted a mobile vending business to be there for two months, they could do that, but every, twice a week, it could not be stored at the site. That was our compromise originally. There was no storing it on any sites whatsoever. The mobile vendors pushed back and didn't like that idea. So we proposed three days. They still didn't like that idea. Kept it at three days for your ultimate decision. If you wish to extend that, feel free, make the amendment. As it stands right now, that's, that was our attempt at a compromise. As far as the coffee shack that you're referring to, they did complete a site plan application, which is the step in order to do permanent changes to sites. So they did go through the proper channels to go through the planning process, ensure that they have enough parking for that business as well as the business that they're located on. There's an agreement for the coffee shack employees to use the permanent sites, restroom facilities and things like that. So they did go through a site plan process to locate there permanently.
And what we're discussing here would not interfere with that kind of an operation?
That's correct. If any business wanted to locate at a, at another and share space with another business, they could go through the site plan process and do so permanently.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you for those clarifications. Vice Mayor?
So are we in the discussions?
Absolutely.
So, so I just want to thank staff on the hard work that they put into this. I remember the importance of, of this discussion at our, at our retreat. And I really appreciate all the attention that you guys paid to the details associated with safety. I think that is extremely important. And I actually like this. I, I think you did a good job. I think we might want to pay attention to this going down the road if we have a few more mobile vendors and we need more spots, perhaps downtown or, or whatever. I think we might want to look at very specific assigned parking. Or I know in bigger communities, we have, there's a lottery system to get the corner of, you know, Third and Grand or whatever. There's lottery systems set up and pre-approved. And so I think if we get to that point, I think we need to, to really keep that in mind if, if the community grows or if all of a sudden we have an onslaught of, of mobile vending operations. But I, like I said, I really appreciate the work. I, I like it. I, I will also say that I am surprised and kind of saddened that we don't have other folks here. And so I don't know if that's the, the time of the year. You know, folks are busy on vacation. I don't know that. But considering we just have one couple here, I, I am a little concerned that, that we might be... And I know we have three readings. I get that, so. But hopefully we'll get, and I know you've had meetings, public hearings or meetings, but I just want to make sure that the public is fully aware and gets their comments to us either at the next meeting or via email or, or something. Because I, I would like to hear from, from other restaurant as well as mobile vendors, so.
Counselor Shumman?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it's a positive that we, that we don't have a number of people here because there doesn't seem to be any complaints. There seems to be a lot of, of people that are encouraged by the quality of, of operations that we have here in Laramie. I do know this, when I went to San Antonio, there was a brochure that was, that said, "We have world-famous vendors here." And, and you, and it was, it was a destination where you must go because they said it will be an experience that you'll, you'll always remember. I, I do know this. This week, five of my kids all got together and said, "We gotta go to Double Dubs," and we went there, and they had moved. They had their operation elsewhere. And a huge disappointment to them because they were looking so forward to that. I don't have a problem with, with, with this type of mobile operations, you know, being in a certain location until it becomes a problem. When the complaints start, then we can come back and revisit this. It's on private property, they need to, you know, we need, as a public, need to know the location or have some way of going and finding, you know, these favorite spots that we have. So I'm, I'm gonna be, you know, very open to any amendments that give us an opportunity to, to let that happen. And I think we need to do it early in case there is some, someone in the, in the business world or in the, in neighborhoods or something that want to come and, and bring other thoughts concerning this. But right now, I would love to have a, a location where we could find these favorite vending spots and know, and be, rely upon going there and finding them and enjoying what they have.
Counselor Schuster?
I'm completely in agreement with Joe. Would like to talk to him and see what we think about a timeframe. But it will only be on private property. It will not ever be on a public street. But yeah, I, I'm in complete agreement on that. But I see no need for every three days for him to hire somebody to come in and move the bus.
Other discussion by council? Mr. Whitzel, did you have something else that you wanted to add?
I did, yes. With that three-day rule, we have some other trailers and stuff that use the electricity and power of, you know, Laramie Fitness or the gunslinger to hook up to keep the refrigerators running. So if we unplug, some of these mobile units don't have generators on the truck all the time or they're running all the time. So I know that the gunslinger and Bearbait use their electricity and power they plug in there. I've also been working with Todd, the Parks and Rec Director. There's a park south of town, the corridor of 287 and I-20, or I-80. We've been talking to him about trying to make that a food truck park, kind of a food truck destination. So you know, like, those certain timeframes of where the trucks will be. So if we have like a food truck Friday, food truck park, that'll always be at that park. I have the capability of offering my generator and services to all the other food trucks. It's a very, very super quiet one, trying to, trying to set it up to where we'll always be at that park, save Fridays. You know, and I will, I will let them have power to, you know, their vehicle and stuff. So I just wanted to clarify kind of that, that sometimes that's why we want to do more than three days because we're plugging in and using their power, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just as a reminder for you guys, you can always work with council members or bring suggestions forward for changes and amendments that we can consider on second reading. Council members can work with staff as well. Counselor Polikas?
Yeah, I do have a comment. I'm very interested in all the ambiances of this ordinance. I'm trying to, I'm trying to justify some of the stuff we're doing. And I'm just unclear, to be honest with you, whether three days is appropriate, whether seven days is appropriate, whether 24 hours is appropriate. I don't know, or whether no timeframe is appropriate. I'm also trying to digest whether it's appropriate to not allow these vendors on public streets or if, in fact, what's the big deal if they are on public streets, particularly if they have to move every 24 hours or whatever, or every eight hours or whatever. So I really would, would encourage the public and also the vendors to email, if they, if it's a little intimidating, come before council. I can guarantee you an email, email that comes to me on subjects for council. I read it, and I, and I think every counselor here reads those emails. It's a very effective way to get your point across to counselors. And I need more feedback and more information to make this, in my mind, a, an appropriate ordinance. So I really, not just from the vendors, I need it from the public, and I would love to even hear it from, from your competition, if you will, which is your, your restaurants and so forth in town. which is your restaurants and so forth in town. I need to get a better picture of it in my mind of where we're at, what the problems are, and where we need to go. So that's my comment for tonight.
Any other comments or discussions for tonight? Counsel Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with what Counselor Polikas said. I personally think that these public vending booths, carts, et cetera, do improve the street picture. They're quite nice. And I personally would have no objection of them parking on public property. Of course, not in a parking zone, that's understood, or impeding traffic, et cetera. But I think it's a nice picture or a nice image to improve the street picture. At times, Counsel Shumway pointed that out, you know, that there are sections where you have these vendors even congregating. I think right now, what I see here is a good-intentioned, well-intentioned ordinance, but in some ways, I find it quite restrictive, more so than I would, for my taste, would like to see. And I think you expressed some of the same things. And in the downtown area, I think, yeah. Why not? Where there's room, where there is a possibility, it's a nice picture to improve the streetscape. Not to impede traffic, not to take away inordinate amount of parking space. So you probably would need a permit to say, "I'd like to park it there," there, and have the city decide whether that's appropriate to do that. But the restriction on public property, to park on public property, seems to be very inhibiting at this point. I don't necessarily think that's necessary. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments by council for this first reading? Seeing none? Mr. Connor?
Staff would recommend that if you're interested in trying to drum up some more support, put within your motion to set another public hearing for our next meeting date, which would be August 15th.
We would need to do that as an amendment to the motion, wouldn't we, City Clerk? Could we just give city council direction to set up a public hearing for August 15th? Any objections to that from council?
No.
Direction so given, City Clerk?
Well, I just wanna say this. If there was to be public comment, it's gonna come up on the agenda, and they can comment during the time it's on the agenda rather than set it aside. We had no comment this time. It'd go fast, but I just think that it's unnecessary at this point. Like I said, there's no complaints, so why are we trying to create a problem when there is none? Or it didn't seem to be much of a problem.
It's council's pleasure.
Have to agree with that.
I... I'm gonna take, and I respect what you're saying, and what you're saying is very accurate. But the opportunities we provide the public, even though sometimes they're not taken advantage of, I'm a little bit hesitant to not. I'm okay with having a public hearing and nobody wanting to speak at it. I'm a little nervous about not having an actual public hearing where the public has an opportunity to speak prior to us deliberating and so forth and so on. So I totally respect what you're saying, and I agree...
I'm okay with your proposal, too. It just seems like a waste of time.
I would also add, for council's recollection, this ordinance was initially on a meeting two weeks ago when the public hearing was scheduled for tonight. It was supposed to be on second reading tonight. So the public has not had an introduction to this really through the media or anything. So in two weeks, if we had another public hearing, we might get some word. Are we okay with that?
It's okay with me.
City Clerk? Please schedule a public hearing for August 15th.
Ike's gonna write a really good story.
Ike's gonna write a great story.
If you subscribe, I've written about this a few times.
Counsel Schuster?
I've read him, I...
I agree with you completely, what you just said. That's what I was raising my hand about, is it's not really hit the media hardcore yet. I haven't seen anything on Laramie Live. Seen a little bit on the boomerang, but until it really hits and people go, "Oh, they were discussing that last night."
All right, with that, City Clerk, can you do a roll call on first reading?
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
McKinney absent, Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto item number 12, public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, item number 13, consideration of future council work session topics. Do we have any suggestions or requests? Nope? Okay. Counsel Hanson?
I just note with glee that my test ordinance is back on there. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, moving on to item number 14, Counsel Hanson.
Thank you. I move that council adjourns to executive session regarding personnel. And this refers to Wyoming Statute, paragraph 16-4-405A and X.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Gabriel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned to executive session on personnel.